Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting to order. If you would please, and that's Edmond, let's first stand for a moment of prayer. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, you have spared us through another year, dear Lord, as we go into the Thanksgiving season. We are grateful, Lord, for the blessings you have bestowed upon us and our families as we go forward through this holiday season, as well through the Christmas season. May we be kind to others, may we be kind, especially kind to our families as we go forward. God bless us in your sweet name, we heavenly pray. Amen. And if you would please, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. ABC. All right, at this time, if y'all will indulge me for just a second, we would like to change the agenda for just one item. We have a proclamation we'd like to do for this particular team here that we've got sitting with us tonight. And if I can get a move in a second to just amend the agenda for this particular purpose, I would love to do that, please. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of letting nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to amend the agenda. Oh, and on a worse start. We have got a group here that, actually, we've got 14 girls and two coaches. At this time, I'm going to read y'all's names, the ones that are here, and then also I'm going to read the names of the ones that are not here with us tonight. And we're going to have y'all line up across the front here. Any particular, I'm not going to do this now, but if you want to, so I'm going to surprise everybody. All right. Hannah Grissom, Emma Black, Hope Buchanan, Skylar Weaver, Charlie Finley, Mary Scott Housley, Carly Canada, and Courtney Crowe. Have I missed one so far? The ones that aren't with us tonight, and I think they need to be mentioned, is Kylie Payne, Haley Casey, Ally Long, Cheyenne Cohen. Okay. Ashley Obikin, is that how you pronounce that? Okay, thank you. And Easy Friedland. They are not with us tonight, but we do want to recognize them as we go forward. And at this time, we have got a proclamation. All right, this is a proclamation by the Board of Commissioners, Pickens County, Georgia. Pickens Junior High School Dragon Net Softball Team Day. And if I may make a correction, I'd like the substitute coaches to come up. That would be Philip Black and Tony Weaver. Do you want to give a team on this side? Come on.
As a matter of fact, faculty does.
If I goof up on some of these big words, you can help me with that. All right. Board of Commissioners, Pickens County, Georgia. Pickens Junior High School Dragon Net Softball Team Day. Whereas many students participate in a worthwhile extracurricular activities while attending Pickens County Public Schools. And whereas the 2018 Pickens Junior High School Dragon Net Softball Team has persevered to become region champions, and whereas coaches Tony Weaver and Philip Black, the parents, administration, and educators at Pickens Junior High School express the highest academic and athletic expectations from students, and whereas it takes tremendous dedication and hard work to successfully balance schoolwork, athletics, and social activities. And whereas the Pickens Junior High School Dragon Net Softball Team concentrates on the joy, camaraderie, and the skill of the game with all team members contributing to the team's success. And whereas the entire Pickens County community is exceptionally proud of the 2018 Pickens Junior High School Dragon Net Softball Team. Now therefore, be it known that the Board of Commissioners of Pickens County, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Friday, November 16th, 2018, as Pickens Junior High Dragon Net Softball Team Day. Extending congratulations to these high-achieving and successful young women, recognizing their hard work and exceptional talent. In witness whereof, as chairman and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Pickens County, Georgia, to be affixed on this 14th day of November 2018. From the Board of Commissioners, Robert P. Jones.
Thank you very much.
Jerry and Becky, please. We can figure out how to gather all these together.
I think there will be a picture. Coach.
All right, I might have to...
Everybody slide this way.
You know, like a row of the girls in front.
Yeah, that's true. You do it.
A row of the girls in front, too. You could kneel down in the front, it would be great.
That's good, you'd be cheeky.
Is that going to work?
Everybody's listening.
Does it work?
Yes.
Y'all ready?
I am proud to get to recognize this team, a team of young ladies that are able to do this, but let me assure all the other parents sitting here with us tonight, there will be other groups in the next few months with the athletic program at Pickens High that we will be recognizing. And of course, let's not forget the football, football team Friday night for the game that's doing business. And we've got a band, Pickens County Band, that's going to Chicago. Will be leaving on Tuesday, and some of the parents, I think, are going to fly out on Wednesday. So we'll be thinking of them as they go up there. So we are very proud for the students of Pickens High and Pickens Junior High School. And thank y'all very much for being here tonight.
I heard people with bats was coming to the meeting. I didn't know what was going to happen.
All right, we have already had the adjustment to the amendments. We've had approval of the agenda. Now, at this time, item number six is the employee recognition, and this is an item that we always turn over to Ms. Becky Denny. Ms. Becky, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you right now.
Thank you. It has been my honor to honor our long-term employees, and we have a very hard-working lady, Ms. Sandy Essick. It's a faithful service in the sheriff's office. Congratulations.
Wait, hold it for a moment. I have someone to congratulate.
I understand she's your right arm.
Team here, that's right. Go, don't hurry.
Goes by when you're having fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, that brings us down to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, I, A, we signed the red, I'm sorry, we signed the retired educators proclamation. Have it right here, and we have read it already. Item B, we signed red ribbon week. Got that one on. Did that the other day, and we just have got it on the website, and we've read it. And also on item C, we signed Veterans Day proclamation. And if I may, on the Veterans Day, November 11th, 2018, whereas during the Great War, which was World War I, fighting between the Allied forces and Germany ceased on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the year 1911, prior to the official armistice. And this date is regarded as the end of the war, to end all wars. And whereas the United States Congress officially recognized this date as the recurring anniversary of the commemoration of the courage and sacrifice of American soldiers in this conflict in 1938. And whereas the document invites Americans to observe this anniversary in schools, churches, and other civil places with appropriate ceremonies. And whereas the American military personnel from all branches of the armed forces have served in hostile environments throughout the world in support of the liberty that we prize as United States citizens. And whereas our nation's a safer place, and the world enjoys more justice because of the services of our armed forces. Now therefore, Rob Jones, hereunto set my hand on this 29th day of October in the year of 2018. And I just want to bring that up because we had a bad day Monday, it was raining. They did have the ceremony. I'm impressed with the amount of individuals that did show up for that ceremony, and it was handled very well. So thank everybody for coming out that day. All right, under item number eight, old business. Ms. Lisa, do we have any old business?
Yes, ma'am.
No old business. All right, that brings us down to item number nine, under new business, an Eclipse contract. Ms. Harvey, you want to discuss that, or would you rather me do that?
John should have a copy of it. It's just, we're looking at a proposal from a different IT company, and their rates are very competitive. Their main office is a little bit closer than the vendor that we have now, and...
So we've been in talks with the company, the company's called Eclipse. They're out of, I believe, John's Creek.
They have an office in Atlanta, but then they have a root office in Cumming.
And we're looking at them, of course, at this time, we're all using Milner, and we're looking at another IT facility as we go forward. So we just want to be sure everybody's aware of that.
And this is the Milner, this would be, if it's approved, replacing the Milner contract that the county admin courthouse has, I think the sheriff has a separate contract.
And if we decide to go with Eclipse, we have to give Milner a 60-day notice to terminate the contract that we've got with them.
Did we look into this opposed to having some in-house people?
We did.
And this is the better?
Well, I don't know if it being any better, but you would have more support when you deal with a company other than trying to hire enough people for an in-house, but you're going to spend X amount of dollars either or. And it's just not so much the labor, it's the equipment that goes with it. Servers and the firewall that you have to have. So that being said, we've got some time, but I do want, if y'all don't mind, please review the contracts. If you have any questions, please call us, and if any issues with it, let us know. All right, that brings us down to item B, the approvals of advertised, the fiscal year 2019 budget. Phil, you have any comments or issues to that?
Well, I put together a packet of information because after the budget meetings, we met again with the sheriff, and there's some adjusted numbers for his budget. I think I've talked to each of you separately, and the last numbers that we came up with is an increase of $378,43. And I really didn't see anything else operationally that they could cut. That does fully fund the 92 positions, and that's basically the only change since our information that y'all have in your budget books.
And if everything, and I didn't mean they were up, but if everything stays according to the budget line that everybody has presented, we should be within budget this time next year, and we will not have to militarily increase.
And with these new budget numbers, the contingency amount is $153,000, which is less than what we've had in the past, but I think we should be okay with that.
Yeah, depending on what the stormers do this year. Sheriff, do you want to, would you like to comment to that, or just?
No, I mean, I know originally when we met, we started out at the 661, and again, those numbers were trying to fit everything in the correct line item and fund the areas that we really did not have a whole lot of control over. Since that time, we've had several meetings, both with the commissioners and Faye, as I can work down the numbers you're looking at there. It does fund 92 of the 94 positions. Basically, we looked over the last several years, and 94 positions is approved for the sheriff's office. With our staff being shorthanded, we've actually cut back. You know, last year, I think we maintained about 89. So this year, Jody Weaver's doing a hiring background and things like that, and we're able to pick up, I think, more employees. Our retention's going to be a little better for some things that we made, you know, some things in-house. So hopefully that'll work. So we're going to do everything we can to keep it down to that, so.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you for being here tonight. On item B, the approval to advertise, we need to make a move in a second to approve the advertising from Ms. Harvey.
Yes, and this, the second handout, the one that's speckled together, that is the, that's what the advertisement we're looking at, we're looking like, that's the way that we advertise it. We advertise the general fund budget, the monetary funds, that's the water and the airport, and also the capital, the squashed budgets, which is a project for the...
All right. Go ahead, I'll start here. Make a move to shift the unit to... Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. You have the authority to go ahead and advertise. Okay, that brings us down to item number C, the reappointment of the following two board members to the Pickens County Board of Health for a six-year term. These two board members, of course, we all know these two individuals. One of them is Dr. Folsom Proctor, and the other one's Mr. Donnie Holmes, who is a registered pharmacist. Do y'all have any other individuals that might be interested in these positions besides those two?
Have they agreed to?
They have, they have agreed. That, so they have no problem, and they do sit on the board and have been very familiar with how the board operates, public health. Any further discussion on those? I need a move in a second to approve.
Move second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that in favor, let nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. All right, we'll go to item D, the approved of 2019 Board of Commissioners' meeting dates Back in your portfolio, you have, we have the meeting dates for the 2019, the proposed meeting dates for the 2019, and everybody knows the, normally the work session is on the first Thursday of every month at 10:00 a.m. in Suite 168, which is this room right here. And then, of course, the main commissioners' meetings is in this room here, also Suite 168 at 5:30 on the third Thursday of every month. And these are the dates to which the county clerk has worked out that would work without nominal conflict. And did you see?
Fourth of July.
There's one change at the fourth of July. Y'all need to decide if you'd like to cancel that one, or if you want to do it the day or two before.
Can we decide closer to that date? Maybe move it to a different date?
The problem with that is you can cancel any of it you want to, but you can only reschedule off here. You know, whereas if you make it part of your approved schedule, then it doesn't count as a change. Does that make sense? What you could do, what you might could do is just delete the one for the fourth of July altogether. Well, I think the local application will have one, but...
Well, at least we could have it posted, and then...
And then cancel it.
Then cancel.
I know a lot of times, and they push something you do.
Move it up a day or something. Well, the, that would be the first two. You can move it up a day, which would be Wednesday, and that is, that is just a work session, but it'd be possible to move it to Wednesday, the third at 10 o'clock for a work session?
Then it, then it, if you decided you didn't need that work session, you can cancel it.
Let's keep everything intact except for July 4th, 2019. Let's go to July 3rd, which will be a Wednesday, on account of July 4th is working out on our regular meeting scheduled day. So that'll be July 3rd at 10:00 a.m. in Suite 168. Y'all see any other changes that we might have looked over? Okay. Need a move in a second to approve? Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Okay, those dates have been approved. All right, that brings us down to item number 10 on the financial report system. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Harvey.
Okay, thank you. The finance report that you have covers the period ending October 31st, and that is 10 months of fiscal year. And the expenditure budget should be at or below 83%. We'll look at the revenues first. The general fund revenues, the total through of 10/31 is $13,794,402, and that is 52.74%. And for the expenditures, looking at the general government functions, the expenditures are $2,769,824, and that's 71.47%. For the judicial report systems, the expenditures are $2,460,441, and that's 71.54%. For public safety, the total expenditures are $10,809,675, and that is 80.7%. And then we go to public works. Their total expenditures through October 31st is $2,286,610, and that's 76.18%. For the health department, the senior center and the MATS program, $527,132, and that's For culture and recreation, the total expenditures are $711,028, and that's 72.64%. For housing and development, $508,010, and that's 77.1%. So the total general fund expenditures are $20,72,721, and that is 76.74%, and that is about 6.2% under the appropriate budget level. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures are $1,618,503, and that's 75.5%. For the airport, $310,142, and that's 70.41%. The line item reports were sent to the department heads and elected officials on Tuesday, November 13th, and I have copies of all those detailed reports if you want me to look at them.
I'd just like to compliment the sheriff's department with so many of you here and Faye for working so hard today. Good job.
She's tough.
She is tough. Good job.
Please, I don't have any. Jerry? All right. That brings us down to, I'm going to have to move in a second. Under item number 11, under action items, we need to approve the minutes from number one, the board meeting on October 18th, 2018, which is in front of you, and they have been sent to you through the web. The, y'all see any changes, dates, anything we made, any mistakes we brought in, thank God? Or I need a move in a second to approve? A move in a second, I'm sorry. A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, then also we've got the work session on November 1st, 2018. The same, we have sent them to you to review. I didn't see any need for corrections or dates, everything looked good on mine, and hopefully y'all haven't seen anything on that one. So I need a, if that be fine, I'd like to move a second to approve those. A move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, that brings us on down to rezon request. We have no rezon requests, do we Rodney? No, sir. For this month. And then that brings us down to guest and comments. And before we get into guests and comments, I'd like to make one item. We need to get with Mr. Landrum. We've got three roads that have questions on about dates to have a public hearing on road closures. Personally, I would like to have two weeks from today, because we have to advertise for two weeks, and have them at 5:30 Thursday, two weeks from today. Those dates will work. I'd like to, what do you think, think of? Huh? That would be the 6th, I believe, wouldn't it? Which would be the 6th of December. Y'all get anything on the, on the 6th at 5:30?
I think I'm... We've got a work session.
Yeah, we'll have a work session that morning, and then once the work session will be at 10, then this year, we need that, those open meetings at least at 5:30 at night. So I'd like to have a move in a second to go ahead and get those, get those set up. Move in a second. The discussion on the road closure, of course, the discussion on Harley Trail, the roads that are opening back up. We had another road, I think, on the Lau farm, that was an old road on that one, and then there was another one. There's three in total, wouldn't it Phil?
We really got four moving on the radio.
Okay. You remember what the, what the third one was?
John, John Capo has this.
Yeah, John Capo had, Capo had asked, and I can't remember what, what that road was.
It's basically, it's two neighbors over, that has gone to mediation in Southern Lakes, and they both agreed to ask the county to ban the road that's, that they've been insuited over.
All right, have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, that has been approved. Now, guest and comments, anybody got any question?
My name is Hannah Bushy. I am with Jasper Merchants Association. This is Krista Kelly. And basically, the role of the Jasper Merchants is to bring free things for the people of the community, the county, to do. And we are here to talk to you about the New Year's Eve celebration, which we have taken over from the city as of last year, and we are in the process of trying to fund it for this year, and we were hoping that you would be a part of that.
How much money are you looking for?
We're asking for $1,200.
When do you need to have an answer?
It doesn't have to be directly, but soon.
Give us time to look at the finances. We just got over the budget, so we're, I'm on this phase up to that. It'll have to come out of, I'm assuming we'll try to have that come out of hotel motel tax, what we like. We don't get as much money as the city gets, but we would like to look at the hotel. If we got, if we got funding available, I can't speak for the other two commissioners, but maybe we might be able to work something out. So you're looking for approximately $1,200?
Yes, that would be wonderful if we could get that to, I think we would earmark that for public safety.
Okay, you're going to, I'm assuming you're going to ask the city of Jasper for the same amount?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. We will, have a, y'all got any questions with her? I know that's kind of abnormal, but...
I'm assuming this is just a part, that you'll be having to get sponsors and so forth. Just curious about the...
Say that one more time, sorry.
What we will give you, you still need quite a bit more money than that, is that correct?
The budget that we are working with is a minimum of $59.50 this year. So, yeah, we've got, kind of broke down according to what we used last year. We were able to bring the cost way down, but we can't do it alone. So we're asking everybody in the community to help us with that.
Yeah, we will take a look at it and give you a heads up. We have, of course, you know we have purchased a new tree for the courthouse, being controlled for the company out of Cumming, Georgia, that's going to be erecting that tree, lights, whole nine yards, and they're going to, they're going to not only put it up, they're going to take it down to store for us, so we don't have anything.
We've heard, and we are really thrilled about that, because usually it's us that's doing that.
Yeah, so it's just, now, I just want to be sure, I know you've got some merch associations, you know, and while I've got you here, the, I just want to be sure, what we're getting is just a tree and ornaments, and having the tree put up. The Santa Claus, the sleigh, the, all the deer... the, all the little deer, that's, that's not us.
Well, you know, and actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because we don't know the role that we are asked to be playing this year. Usually, we do everything. So if we had planned on for the Christmas parade, bringing the sleigh up and taking it right off again that day, because we didn't know, nobody's talked to us about it, all we were told is that we were not responsible this year, and somebody else was doing it. So we can bring Santa, we can bring the sleigh, we can do whatever anybody wants us to do, we just don't wanna step on any totes.
Yeah, but you won't, hey, I'll give you the tree, but you're gonna step on a toke. But, but if you wanna take that response, we would like, I would like, so I might, I have to shut my road crew down for two days to, to put these Christmas, not that I'm, you know, I like to have Christmas decorations up, it does good for downtown, but the county has to shut my road department down for two days to put all the decorations, Christmas tree up, everything else. I'm trying to work it out, where I've got a company now coming in from Cumming that we bought the tree from, and, and gonna decorate it, and store it, take it down, put it up, all the good stuff, but I'm not sure what y'all are planning, nor have I been involved in any planning for, for the sleigh, for the, for the little wire deer, for the...
The Tiffany's.
The Tiffany scene, I, I don't know where all this stuff is at.
We, we, we know where it's at.
Okay.
And the Tiffany scenes, you know, my...
Yeah, and, and, and the county, the county has the Santa Claus in the...
Yeah, it's open.
The county has the Santa Claus in the sleigh store.
Yeah, I know we got the Santa Claus, I don't know where the sleigh's at.
The sleigh is up Kirk's side. He said it's up in one of the other buildings.
Right.
That's a scary, that's a scary thought, knowing what the buildings look like.
Yes, yes, we've been in there. So, yeah, I've repaired Santa a couple times, so, from when he's been rolling around and whatever, but, yeah, when is the tree going up?
They were supposed to, Mr. Dunn was handling that, and the tree is, huh?
November thirtieth.
November thirtieth. That's what the lady from over there told, told us.
Yeah, because the Christmas parade is the first, so hopefully everything goes well. We just had somebody show up at one of our meetings and basically say, we don't need your help anymore, we're doing it. So we kind of just assumed we needed to step back.
Only, only thing that, only thing that we actually needed was somebody to give us a date when the tree needs to go up, because they'll come over and put it up, but this ain't the only tree in Georgia that they're putting up.
Right, well, the Christmas parade is the first, and that's where we wanna do the lighting of, of the, the lighting of the tree.
I think Mr. Jackie got, Mr. Dunn got the word to him that as long as the tree was up by the thirtieth, everything should be fine. So I'm, I'm assuming Jackie had talked to them personally, so I'm, so I'm assuming that's how, that's how it is.
Okay. Well, we'll take, well, yeah, and we'll bring, we'll bring stuff up the morning of the first, and if you want it left up, we're happy to leave it up, and then we'll just come and take it down when everybody says to take it down, so...
What have you, what have you guys wanted?
We didn't know for sure what all you had, all we knew is that there was a tree and it was on a stand, and that they were gonna do lights all over town, but that's, did you have anything after that?
I can't speak for the, I can't speak for the lights all over town, I'm just talking to the sputs in front of courthouse.
Right. And so all they're bringing is a tree?
Bringing the tree and the lighting for that tree.
Okay, we'll bring the sleigh and the Santa and do what we normally do, and just, you know, with replacement of a different tree.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll, and we'll just plan on doing that either the thirtieth or the thirtieth or the first, the morning of first.
Okay, just trying to keep me posted, because if you want me to deliver some of this stuff up there, I get the road department, at least we can deliver it and set it up there.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, if we can have the sleigh done, we would, that would be great.
If they could drop off the sleigh and Santa and...
No, I can fit, fit Santa back in red pickup, because I've got it.
When you talk about the road crew, you talk about dropping it off, are you literally speaking and dropping it, or you actually wanna set?
Yeah, I can't say any more drop.
It's about dropped out. But, yeah, we could, we can get it up or come, I don't know where the sleigh's at. I know where the Santa Claus is at, but I don't know where the sleigh's at.
Kirk's up, he saw it recently.
I just don't have a flash, or I don't remember his issue.
Kirk has seen it? Okay, all right. All right, any comments? Alan, any, anything? All right, well...
No, I got a few questions.
Well, the questions can make the discussion comments.
Well, I do have one.
What's that?
It's not near as entertaining when you don't take time to read the red ribbon we...
I'm not reading it.
I was so excited when I saw it on the agenda.
Steve, you can ask the questions now, with this setup for guests and comments, you can ask them, we don't, we don't answer them, but you can ask the questions if you like.
Well, obviously, running business and raising two kids, I don't have as much time as I used to have, but one thing I'm not hearing, and maybe I, I couldn't see everything that she had put up on the, the screen, where do we stand on the TANs and getting out of the TANs now? And where does our savings contingencies stand, where does that stand that way?
The last audit that we had, the, for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, it showed the fund balance was a little over eight million. The TAN, there's quite a bit of difference between the fund balance and your cash balance, that our fund balance entails a lot of other things, like receivables and the toys, that kind of thing, but it is, it is climbing, it is, it is increasing each, each year. The TAN for twenty-eighteen, we, we did a five point eight million dollar TAN, but we only, we only used, I'm sorry, I think it was five point six.
But...
Sorry, we, we used three point six million of it. So we didn't need quite all, all of that this year.
So we're slowly getting away from it?
We are, I don't know how long, how much longer it will be until we don't have to have it. The budgets keep being busy, and we really need to have cash on hand for at least three months, which would be, we need about eight million dollars cash in the bank at January one. Last year, we had a little over four, but that doesn't last very long when you start paying bills. So we're getting there, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a few years before we'll be able to not have the short-term TAN that part.
Okay, so, and that being said, we rolled back the milage rate. We rolled back before we ever went into budgets. I'm asking a question.
The, you do the budget, and then whatever you come up at the end of the year, the previous year's when your milage rate is set, because whatever you do this year reflects on the milage rate for next year.
Understood, but...
Okay.
We, we're doing the budget for this year, basically, we're paying last year's, but it's still, it's some of it anyway with the TANs, correct?
No, we're paying current years.
Current year.
The TANs for current year.
We're collecting taxes this year, though, to pay back some of the last year, correct? Five point six?
No, it's, it's, maybe it's paid for the current year's budget for twenty-eighteen. The TAN has to be repaid.
Yeah, twenty-eighteen, I guess what I'm asking is, let me rephrase this correctly, the two thousand nineteen budget that we've set up, all of that money, we're going off of what we spent basically from two thousand eighteen, correct?
I don't know what you're asking. The twenty-nineteen budget is revenue that we'll collect in two thousand nineteen, expenditures or revenues that, or expenditures that will be expended in twenty-nineteen. And I don't know what you're saying, that this nineteen budget is...
The TANs is always to borrow the money, and then we have to pay it back for the taxes that we couldn't get in.
Which is twenty-eighteen revenue, and twenty-eighteen expenditures.
Right. And maybe I'm not phrasing it correctly. I'll, I'll put it in writing.
It's making more clear, because you're not making sense.
I understand, but in my mind, it does. The, what are we gonna do in the future as far as the milage rate? With Roy saying that everything, where's our future planned at, or is two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, with the increase that we've got?
If I knew what the future was gonna do, I would, I would buy some extra stock from some company that I could predict that far out. Unless I can't, I can't answer. Huh?
Roy says we're growing by leaps and bounds, so are, obviously, our tax base is gonna increase to some extent with people moving in here. We've rolled back the milage rate now, or we, should we, and Roy and I were gonna get together on this, but obviously, my schedule's not worked out to where I could. If we're gonna get more income in here from a tax base, where are we gonna be at on taxes? Have y'all, have we foreseen this? Have we looked at this to see where we thought we would be for the next couple, three years?
I don't think anybody can determine how much more taxes we're gonna get for the future. I've never, I've never heard that. We can make, we can make a swag, but, but I don't know anybody that's gonna stick their neck out and, and let you know how much money we're gonna collect next year, or the year after that, or the year after that, because...
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
What the rollback milage rate is, is no matter, if there's an increase in the tax digest...
Right.
Which if you kept the milage rate the same, would create more revenue, then that's a tax increase.
That's what I'm, that's...
So we rolled back the milage rate to equalize last year's tax revenue, and so it makes the milage rate amount smaller, but it brings in the same amount of revenue. So if the commissioners are committed to try to do that instead of raising taxes, then what we'll have to do, no matter how much the tax digest grows, is to stay within that rollback rate to keep the, the revenues, the tax revenue the same. That's what the rollback rate does.
Exactly, so bottom line is, is we're looking, and that's what I was asking, what are we looking at for the future with the tax base increasing from the growth that we are achieving? We're gonna see some increase in revenue coming into the county without having basically...
Look at it, look at it like this, I, I don't know how to answer that question, other than, in fact, the only way I can answer that question is, Roy, what's the, what's the percentage increase that you're predicting for Pickens County this year?
I have not made a prediction, I'm just telling everybody that we're very busy and things are going on. Now, Fay, on property tax, when we did that, is that about forty percent of our revenue?
Property tax?
Yeah. Aside from the sales tax and TAVT and all that.
See, it is, um, around forty percent, yes.
It, it's all revenue sources, and what most people not realize, property tax is only one part of that, it's all the other taxes that go in there. I think one thing that we talked about on the phone, Steve, is if you look at counties that are growing, that do grow a lot, does it help make things less? No, it usually costs more because there's more demand for services, and that's what I, that's what these people are learning every time they walk through the door.
And I guess that's what I was asking, what are we doing to look at that for the future? The demand on services is gonna increase, whether it be safety or what have you. If that's growing, what are we doing for the future to, to take that into account?
Well, we always, we always look for the infrastructure, future growth of infrastructure, which that's where water, water and roads come in, and that's what we focus on mostly, the, to get to where we can have growth for the future. The, I don't think I can tell you that, we got the grand view project going on, and of course, the, the water, where we've been building lines up on, on Yukon. Hopefully, growth will spread out from that point of view, but, but right now, the, what growth we've got is extremely, we're one of the lowest, we're still the lowest county in northwest Georgia with the unemployment rate, and it's, it's, property values are as high as, I mean, it's a seller's market here in Pickens County, not a buyer's market, seller's market, which means property values of the county are going up, so, but to give you an answer on that, Steve, I don't know, I don't know how you have...
I can tell you that the two thousand nineteen budget is based on tax revenue staying the same.
Correct.
Not a millage increase. So that means using the rollback rate, whatever that might be, due to the growth in the digest, but we're anticipating for those revenues to stay the same.
Then around about where that ends, I'm wondering.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and I'd like to say thank y'all for coming out, and y'all be careful during Thanksgiving holidays, remember your family, your friends, and remember the military, please remember the military. Y'all take care and be safe. Thank y'all for coming. This meeting is now adjourned.